Am I the only one? Yeah. Am I sexual? Yeah. Am I everything you need? You better rock your body now. Everybody. Yeah. Rock your body. Yeah. Everybody. Yeah. Your body right. Easy, easy, bet. All right. All right.
All right. Friday night, guys. Hope you're enjoying your evening. Um, we had a couple of news that a lot of people were interacting with and, and having some involvement, comments and all that on Facebook, on our Twitter. So we decided to do this podcast so you guys can see where we're getting the information that we're giving out to you guys. It's not anything that we fabricated. It's not anything we're making up. We, I mean, anybody can watch and see. We're going to go ahead and go through this. This was the Commissioner's Court meeting. What I did is I cut up the video so it's going to start on the item of concern. Uh, now we've had again several news. Uh, before we get into this video, I do want to, uh, ask you guys if you can hit the like button and share this, uh, video real quick. Take about five seconds. If you could do me that big favor, I really appreciate it. It helps me out a lot anyways, guys. Now, uh, before we get to the video of the Commissioner's Court meeting that we're going to do, uh, be doing a reaction to, um, we'll talk about, uh, the news that came out, uh, that we got, we here at the Maverick Times, uh, podcast had told everybody it was going to happen. We had mentioned that, uh, there was going to be somebody leaving that was involved with the 57 South, uh, Music Festival in a possible, uh, part of the committee that we've been trying to figure out who the names are of this committee. But what we do have is we've already submitted a request for those names and hopefully we can get that from the city of Eagle Pass. Thank you, guys. If you guys are just jumping on, um, guys, so we did call it, uh, Arturo Marcus, the Economic Development Director from the City of Eagle Pass. He is leaving. He is, uh, I, it was his last day today. Uh, they threw him a nice little party. Um, uh, you know, little cozy party. Only certain directors were invited, right? But not everybody. But anyways, so we have him leaving the community and, um, you know, the only thing that I want to tell everybody about this, and, and I won't, uh, touch on it anymore. Who leaves, um, any situation, um, particularly him, uh, he was making a hundred and three thousand annually. So that's not something to sneeze at there. We just recently jumped in to the hundred thousand bracket as a city, uh, with a past city, couple of city managers. But this is, you know, a guy that's not a city manager that was making a hundred and three thousand. Now, to my understanding that he was given something like a $20,000 raise this past year, um, giving anybody that is, it's very substantial. Um, and now he ends up leaving. Um, again, he was making a hundred and three thousand. Who leaves a type of situation like that? And it seemed that he was kind of everywhere, um, you know, trying to help, uh, you know, other people or, or I don't, I don't know what he was trying to do. I don't want to speculate, um, but he ends up leaving. Nobody leaves a hundred and three thousand dollar job at least, you know, unless maybe something else has a factor out there. Maybe something else was going on, right? And of course, that's the way, that's my opinion, but, um, moving forward, I know you guys are jumping on for, uh, to get the information that's been coming out. Now, earlier today, Maverick County Commissioner's Court had a meeting. Um, it was a special meeting and one of the items that was listed on there, it was listed as executive session, but the Commissioner's Court, uh, agreed and the county judge agreed to have it in public. So, you know, uh, uh, I'm guessing they wanted to be transparent, so they had it out in public, uh, which is great. I, I like that everything is open and, you know, whatever is said is said there and stays there and anybody can see and it's for public record. And that's what we're gonna show you guys right now, uh, you guys that are on here watching us, uh, we're gonna go ahead and show you that video. And if you have any questions about this, because I do know that there were several people that commented and were questionable and I understand that, uh, uh, but we do have some notes here that we took from the meet, the meeting when we saw it and, um, the information on here, I can, uh, go ahead and share, right? Uh, we do have an article that's going to be coming out as well, uh, from that, uh, this meeting, uh, so be on the lookout for that. Uh, let's not take up, uh, any more of y'all's time and get into this video real quick.
Second by Commissioner, uh, Rios discussion. Seeing that there is some, all those in favor, please raise your right hand.
So that was just the item that was ending there and now we're getting into the item.
Item number forty-six, uh, executive session, closed session, uh, executive session on matters pursuant to section five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one, discussion and appropriate action on presentation by county auditor on audit conducted on law enforcement offices regarding licensing and personnel. Very well. Uh, regards, uh, to this particular item, Mr. Trevino, the audit has been conducted on the licensing, uh, and as well as the, um, uh, the reporting on payable, correct?
Correct.
Very well. Um, is the court, does the court's wishes to go ahead and proceed with this, uh, an executive session or open session? I know there are many officials that are here today from the Sheriff's Department, uh, that, uh, I'm pretty sure y'all are here for items that are, that are important for that. Um, is it the court's wishes to have this in open session or to have this enclosed? If there are any legal questions, if there are any legal questions, I'm pretty sure that there, that can be addressed in, in executive session, correct?
That's correct.
Very well. Uh, so in regards, uh, to that, um, is the court amenable to having this in open session?
Yes.
Yes? Very well.
Okay, now, I'll go ahead and pause it. This is the first note that I do want to bring up. Now, I like this. I like the transparency and wanting to have everything open. I, I would like that no matter who, what, when and where. I, I like the fact that decisions or discussions were going to be made public and that's what we're being allowed to see right now. Um, I think more than anything, whatever's going on, people should want to see, uh, or be transparent and show as much of the, uh, decision process, uh, or discussion process, especially when it has to do with certain items. Now, this was supposed to be an executive session items. For those that don't know what an executive session item is, there is certain items that the Texas Local Government Code allows you to, um, have, uh, in consultation with your attorney. Uh, it's not in private. It does include everybody on the board, which is, uh, the judge and the commissioners. Um, when you have that, that's usually something that you can use whenever you're talking about personnel or items such as these, right? Where they're talking about an audit, uh, being done and disclosing those, uh, facts found from the, from the, or the information found from the audit. Uh, there's certain, uh, I can't tell you all of them verbatim, right? But there's certain items that you can go into executive session in consultation, you know, have your, uh, county attorney there along with the judge and commissioners. So the option here was whenever they opened the item, they wanted to see since, uh, right now, you'll get to see that there was several, um, uh, personnel from the sheriff's office, which is great. I, I, I always encourage people to come out and see what happens in these meetings. And if you can be there to at least be watching it on Facebook and stuff like that, you know, because it's a, it's important to stay informed about what's going on with your local governments. I can't stress that enough. That has been our, um, that has been what we've been saying since day one and it still continues to day, you know, wherever we're at, day five-hundred, six-hundred, somewhere around there, right? But it still stays there. Um, with transparency, that, that's great. It's awesome. So we're gonna get to see what happens.
Mr. Trevino?
So here, another quick pause, uh, this is the county auditor coming up.
And I'll just ask the court to, uh, for any consideration, you know, just specifically on the, on any other thing that's on the findings that we, um, reserve any, any legal questions that could come up, uh, for executive side of session behind, um, with counsel. Yes, and could you please provide that same copy to the?
Uh, Judge, Commissioners, good afternoon. Uh, as per, uh, the Commissioner's Court request on April twenty-sixth, I'm submitting the following findings. They're basically statistical, uh, amounts. There's, uh, I'm not sure how, uh, what criteria is used to assign overtime or to have people. I'm not, I'm not second, I'm not, I don't know how the, uh, they determine who's gonna serve the, the overtime, but either way, let me. As requested by Commissioner's Court on meeting eight, the twenty-sixth of April, I reviewed the following time periods. Fiscal year twenty-three, which extended, extends from October the first, twenty-two through September thirtieth of twenty-three. The second, the current fiscal period from October the first, uh, two thousand twenty-three through the paid period ending April fifteenth, twenty-four. Um, starting off with the, um, analysis on the Sheriff's Department for the fiscal year twenty-three, uh, there was five hundred and thirty, five, five thousand, three hundred and fourteen hours of accumulated overtime at a cost of a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. Uh, the highest, sorting the employees with the, um, from highest to lowest, the, the highest, um, officer that had over, with the most overtime, uh, had fourteen percent of all the overtime, um, with an overtime pay of, of, uh, twenty-four thousand dollars. Now, that one officer represents two percent of the, uh, of the force, but made, uh, sixteen percent of the overtime of, of the whole office. Uh, the top two, had a thousand four hundred and fifty-two hours of overtime and, uh, which represented a, uh, pay of forty-three thousand dollars. There, um, two out of forty-eight officers make up four percent of the, the force and their percent of overtime made up twenty-seven percent of the overtime for the department. And you can go on to one through the, the top five. Um, the top five had two thousand, three hundred hours of overtime, which represents forty-three percent of the department's overtime. Uh, when, when you would expect it to make up ten percent, five out, five officers out of forty-eights, ten percent. And, and they're with a variance of thirty-three percent, those top five. And, and then they go, as you can see on page. I don't, at the first, um,
Which one's that? The first actual?
Yeah, with accumulation of overtime and.
For then, that's basically your twenty-twenty-three.
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and pause it there. If you guys, I'm not sure how the sound is, if you guys can hear the numbers he's saying, but we, uh, have it written down here for y'all. Um, we, what we heard is the department total, uh, total hours that the department had. So this is everybody, all the overtime. There was five hundred, uh, five thousand, three hundred and fourteen total hours of overtime. Five thousand, three hundred and fourteen. So that is everybody, all the hours that were, that all the hours expended overtime, no matter what, no matter what, um, position, it doesn't matter. This is everybody that is employed over there, uh, which makes up the forty-eight, right? So you have five thousand, three hundred and fourteen. So if you move up the ladder there, so the first one, that's a total. The top earner of overtime made seven hundred and forty-five hours, okay? Out of those five thousand, three hundred and fourteen. Those five thousand, three hundred and fourteen hours equal to a hundred and forty-seven thousand, four hundred and forty-two dollars, okay? Now compare that total to the top, the highest person, we don't know the name and, and that's not, it's none of our, you know, that's not what we're looking at here. We're examining these numbers. But the top one had in twenty-twenty-three, seven hundred and forty-five hours of overtime. That equated to around fourteen percent of the total department's overtime. This is one person, which is a, a pay of twenty-four thousand, two hundred and twelve. So this individual in twenty-twenty-three made twenty-four thousand, two hundred and twelve thousand dollars in overtime pay through seven hundred and forty-five hours being worked. So if you take number one and number two, you have a thousand, four hundred and fifty-two, which makes up about twenty-seven percent of the department hours. And then that, between those two, number one and number two on the list, uh, it make, they made forty-three thousand, one hundred and ninety-sixth, which is close to thirty percent of all the overtime went to the top two individuals. Now, if you move down to number one through five, you got two thousand, three hundred and eight hours. So the top five, uh, overtime earners, they received two thousand, three hundred and eight hours. That is about forty-three percent. And you have sixty-six thousand, five hundred and seventy-eight in the top five individuals. So the next one, the top ten individuals, which is three thousand, three hundred and forty-three, that's sixty-three percent of the overtime, which equates to ninety-five thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. And that's for the top ten, uh, highest earners of, of overtime. Now, if you move on to twenty-twenty-four, um, you have whoever the top earner one is here, I believe. Okay, no. Let's move on with the video.
The rest, um, dropped down quite a bit to, from, um.
So it's one, one to forty-eight specifically, there's forty-eight employees, obviously, that are, that are, uh, possibly looking at any type of, of overtime specifically that range on an annual from what I'm reading here on your report, Mr. Trevino, is that the forty-eighth employee made thirty dollars in overtime and the, the number one ranking employee.
So what the judge there is saying is that the la, the least earner or the least amount that was earned by, um, you know, opposite of the top earner, the, the lowest earner, he or she just earned thirty dollars of, of overtime pay, which is the lowest, right? You have forty-eight individuals there on the list.
Um, um, on the overtime, uh, made twenty-four thousand, two hundred and two dollars in one year.
Correct.
Um, uh, the second one was eighteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four, nine thousand, six thousand, seven thousand, six thousand, five thousand, and so on. So when I look at, when I look at the report specifically and, and the report that you've given us, obviously, this doesn't have names on, on this report here. So when I have, when I'm looking at from fiscal year twenty-twenty-three to fiscal year twenty-twenty-four.
Correct, yes.
Which are back in, that's the first page and the second page, correct? I just want to make sure that I'm understanding this correctly.
Yes.
Okay. So item, uh, let's say employee that's listed as item number one, two-two-seven. That's the employee number or the, I guess rounding number that, or ID number that y'all have for this employee. That's the same employee, item number one, one, one-two-two-seven for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four and that's year to date.
He was a top earner of, in both periods.
Again, so on item twenty, so that employee, twelve-twenty-seven, made in twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars in twelve months.
Correct.
Correct? And in right now, specifically for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, which we're barely mid-year.
Correct.
He's, uh, he or she have made twenty-one thousand, three hundred and five dollars.
Correct.
Correct? So twenty-twenty-four had seven hundred and forty-five hours and twenty-twenty, I'm sorry, twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four had six hundred and fifty-seven hours regarding that particular, um, and so it's, it's just concerning when I start seeing numbers like that that are, that are repetitive. I guess it's for me, it's going to be important for us to sit down, uh, with the department and understand how, uh, the determination and the differences that are so high, specifically, let's say on this one employee. Based on what I'm seeing and based on, and on your professional opinion, Mr. Trevino, specifically on the overtime rates and, and for what we're seeing, because I mean, I understand my, the concern, obviously, and trying to make sure that the officers have what is needed, but based on these rates, how many full-time officers could we actually employ per, uh, with the departments based on this? Was there a number that y'all had looked at more or less?
Yes, um, Judge, um, I, I believe, I believe it, okay, in the fiscal year. For the fiscal year, let's see, I'm gonna read on the summary here. Um, there's approximately three full-time officers.
That could be added to the force?
Yes.
With the rate that we're looking at.
Yes, your honor.
So that's important to note, um, that three off, if with overtime being paid, you can add an additional three officers. I know that we always want as many law enforcement officers out there and you don't want officers, uh, fatigued. It's better to have more, at, at least in my opinion. That way, there's no officer fatigue or having to work too many hours or stress with their, you know, officers also need to be with their families and, and studies have shown that it does really help with, uh, mental health, because I do know that they go through a lot of things that, you know, us regular citizens probably do not see on a day-to-day basis. Um, so, you know, respect for, for that, for the law enforcement, of course, as always, but, um, that's what, what is kind of, it's give or take. You could get those three employ, you, you can get three employees and be able to increase upon that or expend all this overtime. Now, it's not saying it's a bad thing, but it is showing a comparison that you guys can see. Three positions could come out from the overtime that is being put in. And I'm not trying to take any overtime away from any of the officers. Uh, they, they need to protect and serve and, you know, they can take as much time as they need to protect and serve, right? But moving forward.
Um, so specifically on that, you, that, that's, you know, it's concerning just to see how the, the processes are set in place and that's kind of what, what I wanted to make sure the court was informed on when we're going through this issue. Mind you, this is not targeting in any way, shape or form, the department. My only concern is making sure that, that we are looking at this from a, from a respective way of, if there's gonna be overtime, then we need to make sure that, that this is pretty much taken in a way that's corrective, because when I see one individual making that amount of money, uh, in overtime, it's, it's, it's hard for me to understand how in half a year that individual has already made practically what they've made in twelve months of the, of the prior year.
On my first, on my first, uh, bullet point in the summary, it goes from, it, it mentions, um, from, uh, October the first, twenty-three, three through, uh, April fifteenth of twenty-four, the Sheriff's Department has already spent seventy-nine percent of the prior year's overtime. At this pace, a department will spend approximately two hundred and fourteen thousand in overtime by the end of the fiscal year compared to a hundred and forty-seven thousand from the prior year. This would be an equivalent to three full-time officers with first benefits.
That's including the benefits on that.
Yes.
Questions?
All right, um, before we get, uh, they're calling for questions, right? Before we dive into that, um, my question is, there's forty-eight, forty-eight individuals, right? My question is, is it all of those forty-eight individuals, um, you know, respect, you guys are a law enforcement out there, you protect our, our county, our city at, at times as well. So, you know, y'all got, um, respect there, of course. But out of those forty-eight individuals, I wonder if some of them would like to have a little bit more overtime or if some of them would, or if they're happy with the overtime they get. Now, the salary, unfortunately, for, for our sheriffs, I, I think they're underpaid and they got budget constraints and everything. Uh, I know they're trying as hard as they can to get, uh, additional funding, uh, for these officers and deputies. But one of the things I, I do want to bring up is that if it's, it should be equal to, or it should be a certain way to where everybody can contribute those that want to contribute. If they just want to come in and do a certain amount of, uh, hours as a, as a deputy, you know, that, that's fine. I do know that you, people have families, uh, people might, uh, be doing contract work, which, hey, you gotta make ends meet, you can make ends meet. But the way it seems here, and this is just my visual of it, um, it looks like it's heavily favored to certain people. Um, when you look at the different, uh, way the auditor explains it and how he broke it down in his explanation by giving you an example of the top earners and the top earner again in twenty-twenty-three was twenty-four thousand. That's a lot of, of time. And what they were commenting just a little while ago is that there is a big, a gap, a difference in some of the hours that are being put in. So it's kind of like, are they, um, are they being fair with everybody? Or the, is everybody okay in the sheriff's office the way it's designed, the way the auditor is saying that, um, only a couple of individuals get the majority of the overtime? And clarifying. And clarifying from a post that we po- posted earlier on Facebook, um, our team released a interesting fact, uh, during the meeting. So our team member released that the top five officers or top five, uh, it shouldn't be officers because it's not all of them, uh, can be officers. This is, uh, you know, dispatchers, this includes anybody that can accrue overtime at the Maverick County Sheriff's Office. This is the top five earner. So it wasn't officers, but the top five earning, top five earning, uh, overtime earners. They made up forty-three percent. So you got five individuals, better said than officers, right? You got five employees that make up forty-three percent of the overtime, which is sixty-six thousand, five hundred and seventy-eight. So, you have a big chunk going to five people. And, you know, also another big chunk going to the top ten. The top ten get sixty-three percent of the department's overtime. But you can see that it is top-heavy and there is, um, separation. So, just to give you a contrast on it, um, you got the top ten make sixty-three percent. So that would mean eleven through forty-eight, um, they make up thirty-seven percent of the overtime, which is kind of small. It's, that's a little bit over a quarter, right? So, you have a situation that I am not aware of the overtime policy and I'm not gonna give you my opinion of how it should be run. I, I'm not, uh, I don't, I, I don't do law enforcement. I, I did work in the, in the sheriff's office a couple of years ago, back in twenty-nineteen, as their grand director. Um, but, looking at these statistics, you're seeing that it is a small group that is receiving the majority of the overtime. So, the top ten receive well, well over half of the overtime. But, a- and I understand many people were commenting about, well, what if they don't want the overtime? And, you know, that's, that is a legitimate, legitimate response. But, I wonder if every single deputy, of every single jailer, of every single, um, you know, the, the different positions that are there, I wonder if everybody there feels it is fair the way it's going. If this situation is fair to them. Uh, and I say that because I, everybody should be treated equal. I mean, you guys equally defend our, our, protect our community. You guys equally protect our streets, you know, whatever role you play in, because I, I mean, jailers as well, dispatchers as well, you know, we appreciate everybody that's involved with the law enforcement. But, now, I, I find it hard to believe that you have thirty-eight individuals that are okay with their, the amount of overtime they receive. I might be wrong, I could be very well wrong. But, I find, I find it hard to believe that thirty-eight individuals are not, are satisfied with what they receive in overtime. Um, you know, everybody wants to make a little bit, uh, more money nowadays, especially with, uh, the situation going on in the national level where our, that, we're at a very high inflation, uh, level or percentage where everything is starting to go up in prices. And I know everybody can agree that prices are up everywhere you go. And, everybody, you know, should have equal opportunity if want, if you want to opt-in to be able to get, uh, extra means.
So I, I specifically, you know, just have, um, some concerns, you know, with this as far as how we're, how we are, are handling the, the overtime issue. And mind you, of course, the review on that specifically, um, in regards to the actual licensing and, uh, the, can, the, uh, the issues on, on the law enforcement side. That also was conducted, Mr. Trevino?
Yes, your honor. Um, I had, uh,
Do you have questions?
I, I'm just, um, I don't know, I guess we would have to look at, because it's a big difference. We're looking at forty-three employees and the top one, up to date, twenty-one thousand, the middle one, eh, we're looking at a thousand, two hundred overtime.
Correct.
Within a period of six, seven months.
Yes.
And then the lowest made thirty-six dollars. And, um,
And then we'll, I'll make sure that you have your opportunities.
It, it is, it is, um, I don't know if they have a, a scale, but I guess we would have to meet with them and figure out how they use or who, how they determine who is gonna be going for overtime or how do we, how do they determine that? But that's a question for them. On, on, I guess.
Was there a scale provided to you on that, on that measurement, on how they determine that?
No, but, uh, Mr. Delion or the sheriff could have.
Well, they, they would have. In regards to the licensing, uh, point, is there a separate documentation on that?
Yes, there is, uh, Judge, um, I asked, um, I had permission to, uh, tech, work with, uh, HR. And I asked Mr. Sanchez to take care of that. And I believe he's prepared a report and is ready to share it with, uh, the, the court.
Do you, do you have that, Mr. Sanchez? I know that we've, I, I know that we've, we've authorized HR to work hand-in-hand with the, with the, uh, the auditor. Do you have a question, Commissioner?
Yes, just, uh, the overtime comes from, specifically from where? What is the fund that, that the overtime comes from?
It's, it's the general fund.
The general fund.
Well, there's a set overtime fee, uh, amount that is set for the department, specifically on that issue, um, for the, um, for the year. Um, in the, in this, this fiscal year, they've already surpassed the overtime budget specifically for, for this year. So any changes on overtime would need to come through the amendment process before the court. Yes.
So what they said there, my understanding is that, uh, the sheriff's office, there's different, um, funding for overtime. Uh, those of you that are not familiar, you have the Maverick County Sheriff's Office budgeted, budgets for overtime from their own, uh, funding, right? So that comes from, um, their own office, uh, um, budget that they're given at the beginning of the fiscal year. Now, there is other overtime, uh, funding buckets. You do get, uh, from grant, different types of grants that, uh, also the sher- the sheriff and the deputies, uh, have the opportunity, um, to have. Um, but, the point here is that, uh, they mentioned that they already surpassed the budget for this year for their overtime in the sheriff's department. Not saying that they don't have overtime in another fund, but in the, specifically in the Maverick County, uh, sheriff's office, what they had budgeted for overtime at the beginning of the fiscal year has already been expended. Uh, and you're talking about October, November, December, January, February. You know, we're well, uh, well into the fiscal year, but it's already gone and, uh, they're having to do budget amendments, um, to be able to have that overtime available for the deputies. Uh, expended, spent, um, the money's already, uh, uh, the overtime, whatever they budgeted, they're already over budgeted. So, um, uh, that expand, the ex, they already exceeded whatever was budgeted. So let's say they had a hundred dollars. It's not a hundred dollars, right? Or let's say a hundred thousand dollars. So those a hundred thousand dollars that they budgeted in the fiscal year, uh, under the Maverick County Sheriff's Office for overtime, those hundred thousand dollars are gone already. They do not have those a hundred thousand dollars within the sheriff's department, uh, that they budgeted, that, that's gone. Now, whether they have, uh, some on the grant side funding, i- it's very possible there's other funding for overtime. But what was budgeted for their overtime is gone. Uh, no, no, um, it is not part of the OLS. My understanding, the, what, what they're talking about is the overtime that they have with the sheriff's department. So, you have, uh, OLS is an operation that does have overtime, but tho- those would be, it's a separate account because the funding, uh, is different. It's not local funding, it's, uh, on reimbursement basis. So quarterly, there is a report that is spent. What happens is that the county actually pays that upfront. And then, um, in the backend, and this is how the majority of grants work. And then on the backend, uh, you charge, you fill out whatever form the state or the federal agency has, uh, for reimbursement. And pretty much it's a breakdown of everybody that worked, how many hours, uh, how much money, and then you have the total request. Uh, and you submit that and then the, the, whatever agency is, uh, managing the grant, they go ahead and, you know, send the money to your accounting or, or the auditor's office, um, in this case. Yeah, no problem. Any other question, guys, please? Um, I'm here and I'll answer to the best of my ability. Um, I wouldn't say I'm an expert, uh, but I'm knowledgeable. Um, and no problem, that's what we're here for. Uh, let's see. So, just real quick, backtracking a little bit, and then we'll move on with the video. So you have the overtime here that is being, uh, what was budgeted. Uh, I don't have that number here, uh, the sheriff's office is over that. Again, there is other grant funding that might have overtime there. Uh, I did, I know they're talking about it right now.
Do you have any documentation for the court, Mr. Sanchez? Or is it just specifically on reporting purposes?
Well, I, no, I don't have any information specifically, other than the information.
An actual, like, document for the court to review alongside with whatever you're presenting?
Well, I just, yeah.
Or if you wish to review it, and then you can provide a copy to the.
No, no, I'm, I'm, I'm.
And let me, let me then just kind of, um, just go on to that. Because I know that, like, let's say with, with us, I mean, in, in my departments, which I hardly have anybody that, that's not on, on a set salary, they're not hourly, except until Ju- July first, I'll have two people that'll be in all of the departments that I currently run that will be pretty much going through that hourly, uh, phase. But as far as like the authorization for the, um, overtime process, is there a process that is followed right now for the, uh, the overtime on that, on that mechanism? Or specifically, let's say on the law enforcement side? Because with us, they obviously have to get it pre-authorized.
Yes. Uh, as far as the, uh, the sheriff's office is concerned, I don't know that there's a, a process that they follow other than the assignments that are made on, on overtime. Uh, I know that, uh, the officers work their, their daily, uh, hours, you know, on their assignments, when they're assigned to work on that particular day. Then afterward, my understanding is they work after-hours. You know, that's where most of the overtime comes out of.
The normal payroll process is submitting approved timesheets.
Yeah.
And, uh, not only that, they also provide affidavits as to the actual hours worked on every time period.
Okay, so then, I guess explain then further to me, Mr. Trevino, on that issue. If an, if a director submits or an elected official submits to, um, for payroll purposes. If there's a submission for, um, an employee who is gonna be working eight to six, they punched in at eight AM, but they failed to punch out at seven, they worked late. In that matter, they didn't punch out. Is that when an affidavit is required?
No, every, every.
Or how, how, explain to me the affidavit process.
Um, they, they just, we've, um, there've been so many affidavits as to the hours worked.
Is this every payroll?
Yes.
So every payroll, there, it's an affidavit? It's not actual punched in?
No, there's timesheets, um, treasurer runs a payroll, um, function. And it's my understanding that, um, there's a payroll, um, timesheet along with a affidavit, uh, stating the hours worked by each employee.
Okay.
Every, every paycheck. Is that correct, Trevor? Yes.
Mr. Sanchez? We have your document now, so if you wish to proceed on that one.
Okay, the, first of all, I'd like to, to address your, your attention to the information that was provided by, uh, the sheriff's department in reference to T-Close requirements as to who needs to have a license or get a license certificate, whether it's police officers, the jailers, and telecommunications. Based on that information, I, 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 um, I went to STW and got all the, all the employees. And those employees, if, if, if you look at this form, that has the, the names of the employees, their position, and, uh, if a certificate is, is, is needed, let's say for example, on, on the first one, it, you need a, need a T-Close certification. And this, this individual complies with the certification. The second one, under T-Close, this individual does not need a certification based on this, on the rationale, that, you know, the, the requirements from T-Close. So, when I, when I wrote rationale, I, I was addressing, you know, basing myself on the information that was provided to me that indicates what procedures need a certification.
Uh, so what the HR director is saying is that some of the, I, uh, some of these, uh, the employees there, not everybody is required to be licensed based on the position that they are in. So you have everybody there, um, not everybody again, but certain people, depending on whatever their job title is, they are required to have certain licensing. And if you're, if you have a certain title, you are not, uh, required to have licensing. That's, that's funny because if you wanted to cheat the system, you would figure out what's allowable, what's not allowable, or who doesn't need a, uh, a certification or a license. And then, you know, just pencil in the position, uh, just something interesting, uh, to think about.
Then of course, we have some employees that work in the office that don't need a certification. I also have, if, if, if you look at the, specifically the jailers, you have under compliant date. Those individuals, if you'll notice, they're, they're, the first, uh, jailer, this individual's certification is pending. This individual, by July the tenth of twenty-twenty-four, has to have their certification, otherwise they, they can't continue working there. And, and so it goes with, with all the, all the jailers. And those that have complied, of course, you see complied. And at this point, um,
And for the, the patrolling officers, for their, um, because I'm just looking at that specifically, because you have them specifically set for the jailers and transport officers. So was there a review that was done also on the actual patrolling?
I didn't do a review on the patrols. Uh, I just did on the jailers, I mean, unless I misunderstood my instructions.
So I think specifically just to make sure that everything is in compliance as far as on the licensing for that, because it was a full-blown license, uh, for, for that review alongside, um, with the, the question that was also in question as far as on the, on the, um, reserves, if I believe, which, which is also something that we're, the chief submitted.
Reserve deputies, I, I did, uh, provide a listing of, of all the reserve deputies. Uh, well, I would have to go back and get their licenses and so forth. Okay.
So then we're still pending, obviously, information then on, on the, on the licensing standpoint.
Yes, on all the reserve deputies and their licenses. I'm gonna have to go back to the, uh, constables and, of course, the Sheriff Department to get that information. And I'll, I'll provide it.
But there has been a preliminary one done on the reserves, correct? Because that document, I think, has already reached my office.
Well, yes. But the, the only, the only thing I indicated there was, they were on reserves, okay?
The names?
The names, yes. And that's what I understood, that you needed a listing of the names. And I provided that already. However, if, if, uh, if, if, if needed, I can go back and go to the constables and go to the, the Sheriff Department. And next to the, the reserve name, you know, indicate their certification. And they should all have a T-Close peace officer.
Correct.
Otherwise, they wouldn't qualify to be reserves.
So I believe that, that was part of what we needed to just obtain within the, within the review. And of course, on the, on the audit side, just to make sure that everything has been in, in compliance is for, at least for the information of the court, specifically for, for that end. Um, I think when, when the court asked for this information, um, it was specific based on the situations that we were seeing, based on the, on the year prior, on one, on the overtime matters that we were facing. Uh, and two, of course, on the, um, the continuation of the, of the concern on just making sure that licensing and everything is in compliance, uh, for, um, for the department, uh, in that matter. Um, I do want to, I have a couple of questions that, that I have for, for legal, but I know that that would have to be addressed, uh, in, in closed session. Um, but Sheriff, I know that you had asked to say something, and I wanna make sure that I give you the opportunity to speak. Yes, please, feel free.
Okay, again, I'll giving opportunity, being transparent, letting people speak. Um, that's always good. Uh, this is the sheriff, he's gonna come on and, and explain, uh, he had something to say.
Judge, in reference to the overtime, it's, uh, the Sheriff Department, I guess not only the Sheriff Department, but the other law enforcement, uh, departments, we also having, uh, trouble with years back with the overtime. Because my deputies, you know, when they stop a, a vehicle or something like that, or something happens, and it's time to go home, they have to stay there and, and take care of it, they just can't go home, right? Now, we have this individual who's making a lot of overtime, and, uh.
And, uh, that's, that's understandable. But I, I mean, I'm not sure how long it takes to, if you have somebody stop, let's say like an hour, ten or twelve, I'm not sure, uh, the shifts are, what, twelve hours possibly? So if you're driving and you're getting close to your twelfth hour, I, I would say the last hour of their shift, um, maybe possibly don't, don't have them, um, you know, stop anybody the last hour of their shift, that could prevent some of the overtime that, that the sheriff is stating because, let's say they work twelve hours, and you, you go ahead and instruct the guys, you know, hey, uh, you stagger them. When you're getting down to your, you know, last hour, if, you know, you don't see anything wrong, I mean, you know, what are the chances that you have? You're always pulling somebody over. Now, you do have some people that may be on the operate, uh, operations side, but I don't see, you know, too much accumulation coming from that, and, and that's understandable. Of course, the, the deputies need to finish out what they need be, what they need to do. But, um, you know, the, I, I don't think that that too much of the overtime that was accumulated, but the sheriff's gonna further explain.
He's with the, um, CID department. In the CID.
Okay, well, I, I mean, we don't know who, who the individual is. So I, I'm gonna go ahead and revert this a little bit back.
These, you know, when they stop a, a vehicle or something like that, or something happens, and it's time to go home, they have to stay there and, and take care of it, they can't go home, right? Now, we have this individual who's making a lot of overtime.
Okay, so he's talking about the individual that is making a lot of overtime. This is the sheriff.
And, uh, he's with the, um, CID department.
So the sheriff is telling you it's an investigator?
In the CID department, all those investigators do not get overtime. And this person is, is, he's the supervisor, so.
I, I, I don't know if I understood that correctly. Um, he, I think the sheriff said that, that, let, let me rewind that back, guys, I, I'm interested in tell what exactly.
CID department. In the CID department, all those investigators do not get overtime. And this person.
So he's saying that investigators do not ha- do not get overtime? I mean, is, is that what everybody else heard? Uh, 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 that's what I heard, that investigators do not get any overtime? But the highest overtime individual was an investigator?
He's the supervisor.
He's a supervisor? Now, I'm gonna, I'm gonna rewind it back a little bit, just listen to the tone. You can tell a lot, uh, if you have read any type of human, um, human nature books or any type of books that get you familiar with body language, tone. Um, there's, you communicate, ninety percent of our communication comes from our tone, our, in our body language, uh, not the actual words. So you can actually be saying something and showing something absolutely different, right? And, uh, anybody can set their mind or, you know, uh, put themself in a habit where they re- try to recognize those little changes. And those changes always come given a certain, uh, situational, uh, like an emotion type of thing. So whenever a person is feeling a, a certain way, or, um, this is the reaction to it, right? Different people react different ways. But I'm rewinding this one last time so we can go ahead and, uh, listen to it.
The overtime, it's, uh, with the Sheriff Department, I guess not only the Sheriff Department, but the other law enforcement, uh, departments, we also having, uh, trouble with years back with the overtime. Because my deputies, you know, when they stop a, a vehicle or something like that, or something happens, and it's time to go home, they have to stay there and, and take care of it, they just can't go home, right? Now, we have this individual who's making a lot of overtime, and, uh, he's with the, um, CID department. In the CID department, all those investigators do not get overtime. And this person is, is, he's the supervisor. So whenever this case is so forth, he goes and he's not working, they call him, he has to go over there. Or, and also we had complaints from the Nano, uh, Commissioner Rios, those is that, uh, over there in El Indio, they have complaints of vehicles going real fast, the safety factor in reference to the schools and so forth.
Yeah, so I, I, I think I heard it correct, and I think you guys can agree. He said that investigators do not make overtime, but the supervisor, he, he does, and he's talking about that individual.
I get those complaints. So, um, that's the per- that's the reason this person's always being called, because he's the only one, he's close to that area, and he's the only one with the C A D division that can, you know, work overtime.
A couple of questions that, that I have for, for legal, but I know that that would have to be addressed, uh, in, in closed session. Um, but Sheriff, I know that.
The overtime, it's, uh, with the Sheriff Department, I guess not only the Sheriff Department, but the other law enforcement, uh, departments, we also having, uh, trouble with years back with the overtime. Because my deputies, you know, when they stop a, a vehicle or something like that, or something happens, and it's time to go home, they have to stay there and, and take care of it, they just can't go home, right? Now, we have this individual who's making a lot of overtime, and, uh, he's with the, um, CID department. In the CID department, all those investigators do not get overtime. And this person is, is, he's the supervisor. So whenever this case is so forth, he goes and he's not working, they call him, he has to go over there. Or, and also we had complaints from the Nano, uh, Commissioner Rios, those is that, uh, over there in El Indio, they have complaints of vehicles going real fast, the safety factor in reference to the schools and so forth, I get those complaints. So, um, that's the per- that's the reason this person's always being called, because he's the only one, he's close to that area, and he's the only one with the C A D division that can, you know, work overtime. When my deputies work overtime, it's not that they just wanna make the money, they, they, they're working out there, you know, it's hot and everything, cold days, and, and, you know, there's times that they just can't go at the clock of, go home. Uh, and, uh, if I would like to pass the, the floor, if you don't mind, is to, to my chief deputy, he's in charge of the operations, maybe he can give you more details in reference to the overtime, and then my, uh.
Guys, um, just a quick question. Do you accept the explanation that the sheriff just gave us? Are you satisfied as a resident with the explanation that was just given by the sheriff about the overtime? Uh, let us know in the comments if you see, you know, if that's all right with you, if it's good, I, I mean, that's fine, right? But I don't think he really said too much. I don't, I, I mean, I got, he, he told us pretty much who the top earner is. He says it's a CID supervisor, and this is coming straight from the sheriff himself, um, that is saying that, he's identifying him. Um, and there's an explanation that they get calls from somewhere and complaints from schools, and he lives over there. And, and that, that doesn't, that doesn't make sense. But he, he called Chief Delion, so this is the chief deputy?
Award in reference to, uh, the, the tails, so forth. Thank you, Judge.
Yes, sure.
Judge, commissioners, we're, we were awarded on, uh, two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, we were awarded eighty-eight thousand for overtime. And, uh, we spent, that year, we spent a hundred and eighteen thousand of overtime. I believe that was the first year that they actually, uh, removed the comm time from the deputies, and they started.
So in previous years, the Sheriff's Office has gone over in their, their overtime. Um, again, they have forty-eight officers. Um, I'm not sure what the problem is.
Paying overtime for the deputies. After that, this year, we were awarded less money, eighty-six thousand, six hundred on overtime.
Two thousand less?
When it's been shown that.
That's what, that's what I kinda got from it.
Now, they didn't take into consideration the pay rate that we, we got increased also. I know we were paying, I think the deputies were getting paid seventeen, and now they're getting paid twenty oh eight, twenty oh five, which roughly, an officer's making five dollars more an hour per overtime when he works. And that's only one officer, five dollars more an hour. And that's why we're, I guess, is that's why you see that jump from that to this. Also, we had major events in our community this year, which requires the Sheriff's Office to deploy several deputies at once for several days in the Camal area and Rosita Valley, and we had other issues also. Now that we also are working in conjunction with ISDPD in reference to the, to the active shooters in schools, we also have more responsibilities that the state is requiring the sheriff to do. So that's some of, of what I can tell you right now. If you have any more questions, sorry, you know, tell me the names, and we can sit down and talk about what can we do in reference to that.
Well, the issue, the, the issue, Mr., uh, or Chief Delion, was not specifically the names on the individuals, because this isn't, we're not looking at any one individual. My issue here, that's why specifically we've asked for them to be numbered, for us not to know specifically on those names. But, um, and, and of course, that document of.
I mean, I think that that was the right way to go, is have nobody identified, cause that, it, I think this was a tool not to, you know, get rid of anybody or, or do anything. It was to see the operations that are happening, and, um, I think it's always best, uh, I, I was involved before, I have experience in, in, you know, assisting in, in a department in a capacity where you're looking at the budget and you're seeing, uh, different, uh, aspects being spent compared to your budget. That needs to be monitored, and you should always be auditing your own process to make sure that the, the output that you're getting is true to what is, is, uh, being documented throughout, you know, your work performance. So it's important to always do that, um, which this is the mechanism for.
Of course, it's provided to everyone specifically. I'm sure that through any other information, if the court wishes, they could, they could get the, the information if they, they ask for it. But in regards to what I'm looking at here, and just from what I, from what I see, I mean, obviously, there is just a, a concern, because we understand, we see what the officers are going through and what you all are having to, to deal with. Um, if there's a need for, a need for additional personnel, well, then we need, obviously, the assistance of the Sheriff's Department to work with us on, on, of course, how payroll is gonna be distributed properly. Because it's, it, this here is.
Did you see that reaction? I just wanted, look, look at the top left right here. Reaction?
Yeah, sorry, you know, tell me the names, and we can sit down and talk about what can we do in reference to that.
Well, the issue, the, the issue, Mr., uh, or Chief Delion, was not specifically the names on the individuals, because this isn't, we're not looking at any one individual. My issue here, that's why specifically we've asked for them to be numbered, for us not to know specifically on those names. But, um, and, and of course, that document, of course, is provided to everyone specifically. I'm sure that through any other information, if the court wishes, they could, they could get the, the information if they, they ask for it. But in regards to what I'm looking at here, and just from what I, from what I see, I mean, obviously, there is just a, a concern, because we understand, we see what the officers are going through and what you all are having to, to deal with. Um, if there's a need for, a need for additional personnel, well, then we need, obviously, the assistance of the Sheriff's Department to work with us on, on, of course, how payroll is gonna be distributed properly. Because it's, it, this here is a, is a team effort. And I'm glad that the majority of y'all are here today, uh, to, to hear this for yourselves. And I'm, and I wanted to have this in open session, because I felt that it was important for y'all to know that this is not anything personal. This is just making sure that, one, me as a budget officer, that we can make sure and work together as a department and here to specifically come up with a plan of action as to how we're gonna be able to, to afford this. And I, you cannot put a price on safety, but I also know that at the end of the day, when you're looking at this matter, we also need to make sure that we're, we are budget conscious on what it is that we have. That we have to, we all have to, we all have to agree. If you don't have the money coming in, then it's, it's an issue. We've had a, a decrease in, obviously, in funding that has been coming in from whatever it has been specifically from the jailers, uh, or from the outside inmates that have not been able to. And we have seen that issue, and we have been working together, uh, specifically on that matter in order to address that. Obviously, new contracts have been issued with other counties in order to address that issue, and also to make sure that we are processing people out quicker, which we have been working closely with you all on that matter. I do believe that there are some issues that we need to work out, but that's a separate topic and a separate conversation that I think that we need to have at a later point. But here, my point is just making sure that what we are looking at is that we need to, to be aware of how we are handling the budgetary, uh, constraints and how we are working together to make sure that we can meet that goal. We all are doing everything, every department has been, has been cut based on what it is. And I understand that it is a safety issue and that we have to put that at the forefront. But also, I, I find it just very hard and very difficult for me to look at, look at the numbers that are being presented by the audit, and then to turn around and say, and see that on, in any given two years, that it still becomes, you know, a, the, based on, on the numbers that are provided specifically, that it's still within that range, and it's still those same employees that are making large amounts such as twenty-four thousand, eighteen thousand, nine thousand. It is, it's, it is nothing based on anything short of us looking at this in a fairness standpoint, and also looking to see how we can control that. Because I continue to see budget amendments that are coming before this, before my office, making requests from within your department, asking specifically that we take away from prisoner care or that we take away from other specific departments where we cannot be. asking specifically that we take away from prisoner care or that we take away from other specific departments where we cannot be doing that. I mean, that's what they're set for, but we, we need to make sure that we're working on this jointly together. That's why these audits are requested. They're not requested for any reason other than making sure that these issues are addressed and how we can move forward.
Sure.
So I am hopeful and I, of course, wanna make sure that I extend this to you from the court level, that we're here to work together and to come up with the best solution. Mind you, not all the time can we find and we can give you, you know, the Cadillac of, of a budget. I wish we all could. I wish every department and every precinct could have the, the, the budget that they wish. We've got roads that need to be fixed in every single precinct. Just tell the people and of course, the ones that you all are, are out there dealing with when you're patrolling off of Rosita Valley Road or Old Pioneer Road or roads that are out there that need a lot of work. There's a lot of requests that people are asking for and we're trying to get to the level to where we can make sure that we can turn around and say, you know what? We're understanding that there is that concern, but we also need for everyone to understand that we all need to be on the same playing field here, working together as a team. I can't have one department exceeding in, uh, in expenses versus others that are still trying to maintain. We need to keep it controlled. So that's why I asked for this, this to be, or the court asked for this specific.
So I hear a lot of, um, fairness, uh, calls for fairness and equality. Again, um, whenever we heard these numbers, we wrote them down, we have them, uh, that the audits provided. If you look at it, the top five, um, what was it? The top five overtime, uh, earners, they account for forty-three percent of the total department's overtime. So now, if you go back, there's all those other individuals that are in the lower percentile of that, of the, of the top earners. I would wonder if they're interested in, you know, getting a little bit more overtime and how that situation is, if they actually are, you know, I've heard people say that, well, they might have other jobs, they may not wanna work the overtime. Now, and, and that's legitimate, totally legit, but are they offered the same opportunity to get overtime? And one, one of the things, it, it's funny, everything was provided to be in, uh, an environment where it's anonymous, where, you know, nobody's gonna get ridiculed because it was not about this, as you can see. They're telling you it's not about it, but you had them pretty much telling you who it was and it's their own.
Uh, and, uh, if I would like to pass the, the floor, if you don't mind, is to my the money, they, they, they're working out there, you know, it's hot and everything. Please, you know, when they stop a vehicle or something like that, or something happens and it's time to go home, they have to stay there and, and take care of it. They just can't go home, right? Now, we have this individual who's making a lot of overtime and, uh, he's with the, um, CID department. In the CID department, all those investigators do not get overtime and this person is, is, he's the supervisor. So whenever this case is so forth, he goes and if it's not working, they call him, he has to go over there or, and also we had complaints from the Nano, uh, Commissioner Rios knows is that, uh, over there in El Indio, they have complaints of vehicles going real fast, the safety factor in reference to the schools and so forth. I get those complaints. So, um, that's the per- that's the reason this person's always been called because he's the only one, he's close to that area and he's the only one with the C A D division that can, you know, work overtime. Uh, when my deputies worked overtime, it's not that they just wanna make the money. They, they, they're working out there, you know, it's hot and everything, cold days. And, and, you know, there's times that they just can't go at the clock out, go home. Uh, and, uh, if I would like to pass the, the floor, if you don't mind, is to, to my chief deputy, he's in charge of the operations, maybe he can give you more details in reference to.
I, I just find it, uh, I don't know, uh, again, if you guys are satisfied with the explanation, um, I, I would have liked to hear a little bit more from the sheriff, um, given that he is the elected official there. Um, a little bit more of an explanation, but it does seem kind of, you know, off that one person is turning in over twenty thousand dollars in overtime, uh, back to back years. Um, it's, I don't know the details of the work, so I can't, uh, you know, unfortunately, I can't, uh, bridge the gap for you, but understanding the key, the, the main point, the main point here is that the top five, uh, earners of overtime, again, this could be a deputy, this could be um, a jailer, this could be somebody working as a dispatcher and an investigator as, as, they kinda, they kinda gave out their own, you know, their own employee, they, uh, outed him himself.
This was a sort of a chance of twenty.
I mean, staying in during the.
Paying overtime for the deputy.
They mentioned that he was an investigator and that he, um, is a supervisor. I, I, I think there's only one, that's from what I gathered, and that investigators do not make overtime. And this is coming straight from what, uh, the sheriff, Tom Schmerber, said. So it puts, uh, I'm curious as to if some of that work being done by the supervisor investigator, if he's, if that's able to be done by somebody else that may wanna get some overtime. Now, the explanation that we gave was kind of, uh, uh, I'm not too satisfied, but, uh, you know, this is the citizens, we need to, uh, get a clear understanding of the explanation, which we, we didn't. Uh, we did hear that, you know, he lives o- he lives over there, I think I understood in, uh, you know, I guess in a, a secluded area and that he gets called to the schools. I'm not sure how that situation is, but again, when you have, um, one person, you know, turning in fourteen percent of the overtime by himself, uh, equating to twenty-four thousand dollars, uh, that's quite a bit of overtime. And, uh, I think that the reason here is to find out what better situation or how can we manage the taxpayers' funding better and get some more quality and, uh, equality into the rest of the deputies and make sure that everybody has an equal opportunity to get some of this overtime. Again, we're going through one of the worst, uh, inflations that, uh, anyone has felt in the past, you know, twenty, thirty years. It's been difficult for everybody, so of course, people wanna have an opportunity to make more, uh, money. It goes with anything, right? But, uh, I'm glad you guys can join us tonight and, uh, let us explain some of the posts. We do have an article coming out as well, so, uh, be on the lookout for that. We'll be able to detail a little bit more about what happened here and give you guys an idea. Um, if you didn't catch the video, we'll have it in written word so you guys can know what's going on. And if you guys haven't already, we do have a series out, um, if, uh, you guys wanna check that out, we do have it, uh, available on our website, W W dot themaveritimesnews dot com. Um, if you, uh, just Google our website, The Maverick Times, it'll pop up right away. Uh, check it out. Um, it'll have a lot of details of what's going on, the information that we discovered, um, through Open Meetings Act. We're still following up on the, uh, fifty-seven South Music Festival. Again, guys, nobody else was telling you a week before, uh, Arturo Marquez is the Economic Development Director. Nobody was talking about him leaving. We said it, six days later, it's his last day here in the, in the city of Eagle Pass. Um, why would you run when you make a hundred and three thousand dollars? Uh, we are waiting to see and confirm if he is one of the, uh, members of this committee that may have gone outside of the boundaries of the rules for, uh, purchasing. So, uh, stick around, we are getting that information for you. As soon as we're provided that information, we'll be, uh, we'll be giving it to you guys to make sure you guys know what's going on in your city, in your county and the situation that happens here in our community. Any situations that happen here in our community. Thanks again, guys. Uh, I wanna ask if you guys could please share this, doesn't matter what platform you had, you're in, if you can like, uh, share this post, like it, give it a thumbs up, give it a frown, uh, you know, it doesn't really matter, anything helps. Uh, it's much appreciated. Thank you for joining me on your Friday night. Uh, I hope you enjoy the rest of your Friday night. Uh, this is the Maverick Times Podcast. We're up to seventeen episodes and we're gonna keep on coming, guys. Uh, shout out real quick to our sponsors. Uh, Viva K nine dog training, grooming and boarding center, eight three zero three three five twenty-one eleven. Visit them at thirteen eighty-eight William Street here in Eagle Pass, Texas. Iron primate MMA eight three zero four two one sixty-eight eleven. They're coming up with a six-week boot camp. Uh, check that out, uh, check them out on Facebook. Uh, shout out to the, uh, Maverick County Tax Assessor Collector-elect, Mr. Montemayor. Congratulations on your victory. Uh, we look forward to seeing you take, uh, charge in January twenty twenty-five. That's all I have for you guys tonight. Uh, be on the lookout, be sure to hit that little alert sign and so whenever we have a video or a live, uh, we're gonna pop up and send you a notification so you can join on and get the latest and greatest news that nobody else tells you. Um, I know that there's a media out there that said, uh, you know, some story about something, but, uh, we brought you the video, we wanted you to see exactly what happened. There was no setup as the narrative came. Um, but, uh, hey, it is what it is. Medias will be medias, will do what we do. Keep on bringing you the facts straight with video, with the documentation. Check out our website, all the documents and evidence you need is there. Uh, we provide you with facts, not tax, uh, that someone would say. Uh, have a good night, guys.